Here you go. Four meeting. First item we intend is to do four minutes.
For the December eleventh minutes.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? All those who favor singing, pardon saying I. I pose questions.
Stay in.
Sessions from Joe and Jeff.
I'll make a motion for the December fourth budget work session minutes. We don't need, you don't need to do those. Okay. Perfect.
My setup is great. So now give us an overview of the. The council. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. How's everybody tonight? Right on. I'll be stopped after next work session. Ready? I'm ready for my chair personally. But, okay, so anyway. This is an overview and I just went ahead and kind of constructed the handout that I did years previous. Doing some of the larger numbers that you'll see online items. With the department. Yeah, it's sort of hardware, the first. Section there. So as you know, we use Chromebooks for all students in this district currently. I'm going to plan to continue to use Chromebooks exclusively for student use. It provides the most flexibility and security for our kids. In terms of. Teachers' work and the compatibility with all these systems, Chrome just puts it all together. So going down that road. As we have been, the bigger number you'll see, and this is a change from our previous strategy. Is the Chromebooks that we issue in sixth grade, we're finding that by 10th grade rolled around. We're doing a lot of repairs for those Chromebooks in 10th grade for those students. Because again, they start with their own in sixth grade, which means they have possession of it. They take it home. So it's a bit. Have your use that they would get here at the elementary with it. So we're finding that that damage is kind of stacking up pretty good as of that time. That's right. Rolls around in devices. You know, it's a part. So we're going to push back issuing new Chromebooks with the larger screen 10th grade. Versus 11th grade is what we've been currently doing. They got that provides that device. To be not only good for the two years. That's sorry, three years in which they haven't, but then another two years at least after that for after they exit, they get more like we've talked about. Give them the option to purchase that device for college use, future use, whatever they need for. So that ensures that that device stays usable for the next couple of years post-graduation. Which is always good. For them to understand and know that they have that option to look forward to. On top of that, so that's why you see that number of forty-four. Going forward, we're just going to be doing the 10th grade. So this year is that last year, we had to do 10th and 11th, so we can get on the cycle. So now going forward, it's a sixth grade. Device and it's a 10th grade device. So that number of dramatic has essentially as we move forward. So that's kind of a one-year deal. Chromebooks for sixth grade is currently twenty-two students in that class. Actually, it's currently twenty students in that class. So accounts for a couple of enriches there twenty-two units. It's what we've been doing very good. Any questions on the Chromebooks allocation of Chromebooks?
What is the purchase price for the graduating seniors to purchase that Chromebook?
Fifty dollars.
Perfect.
And is our normal. Chromebook expenditure about eleven thousand dollars? Is that like kind of the average because we're buying some new ones and for the six squares and some new ones for the we work.
Yeah, I'd say I'd say total recurring was right around that number. Yeah, going forward. Yep.
So we're just, we're like a little bit higher than that because we're going to. We're buying two rounds.
Yes, we're just like said, it is to get the cycle rolling. We're going to have to hit them both.
Sure.
The 11th graders coming up and the 10th graders, so we can get on that. Get on that timetable.
Is the 250 unit price, has that been consistent year to year or?
It has. Yeah, Chrome's really good about keeping their pricing right in that two hundred, two hundred and thirty dollar range. And then we have to spend. The only price that's been increasing and it's only three percent a year roughly is the management license cost for this Chromebooks. It's every unit we buy, we have to buy a management license for us to be able to control all the, all the restrictions and all the content and make sure that we have full control of that device. That breaking whatever support. So that that's actually gone up to thirty-two dollars. Used to be twenty-seven. Three years ago and it slowly incrementally been raising it. But yeah, this year's thirty-three dollars per year. So that's, that's a gross average two fifty over time. Yeah, it's been pretty consistent. Uh, moving on to the network edge devices. So last year I had in the, in the, in the budget was the firewall device replacement and the core routing switch replacement. Which was a twelve thousand dollar cost. This summer's week. The only reason I place it in this manner because that's the line number to escape. Over the course of the past two months. Strategies changed a little bit when I constructed the budget. So the cost of the network edge security device is going to be wrapped into a subscription service that I'll get into a little later. So not the purchase of the routing switch is still. Necessary to the two to fifty-five hundred dollars. But the firewall device will be wrapped into a subscription cost moving forward, which I'll explain here in a little bit. So that will ensure again the most next-gen devices for the highest security level that we can provide for our internal network. Clear touch display. So we're actively rolling clear touch as a platform. We have. A lot of great response this year. The use has been increasing for sure, especially between. The users who took the time over the summer to get that, to get that training session, that three-day training session in. So Heather Krill, Kristen Baden, Megan Hool, Dory Beeden, like there's a nice handful of, I'll call them this semi-pro users at this point. And they've been sharing experiences and talking colleagues and kind of like telling the advantages and people were becoming more interested day by day. For those devices. So again, moving forward, that number is based on a projected need. I won't say that seven will be necessary moving forward because I fully gained the feedback from the staff to understand. You know what that number looks like. I think, I think up to seven, it, you know, is a good number to start with. And this is again. This will account for the permanent installation of these boards into the rooms. So right now our units are on carts. Which gives the flexibility to use, you know, around for other purposes such meetings, conference rooms. So by. By getting, you know, that number or close to that number, we're able to put those in the rooms for the power users. Permanent installation and then have the ones on cart to be able to get sign out. People can explore. You can use it for other administrative functions as well. So again, I think it's a wonderful investment. These devices have a seven to ten year lifespan. They're fully managed and controlled centrally by me. So again, it's, it's its own little environment that they create. So the more we have, the better we can do. And by that, I mean, once we have permanent displays in every classroom, we can broadcast, we're the announcements via those centrally managed devices. People could collaborate classroom to classroom whenever we have those permanently installed. There's a lot of, again, interactive features that. The kids are becoming more interested in as they get the chance to touch them and utilize them. So. The growth has been pretty good this year and I'd like to continue, continue fostering that growth in the future for that as a solution.
When did you start implementing those?
We got our first clear punches. Two years ago. So two school years ago. And three, the first one took three years ago and then last year we re-upput it on a four. So we have, or three, so we have seven total units now. And then this one, it is, like I said, there's seven that are out there in the wild. Permanent installation and still have the flexibility with the parts with for everyone else.
Well, those kind of grants, am I? Yeah, initially and then we just got approval for another one through a grant. So we're going to try to keep using those grand dollars as we can. Purchase some additional ones.
Yeah. So again, that number is forty-five hundred a unit is. Again, the roundabout for those units right now, the ones that we've gotten previously have run between seven and eight thousand dollars. Because the carts cost twenty-three hundred dollars to thirty-five hundred dollars. So. Once we get these units there on the wall, everything comes to mouth included in that package. So we kind of the. Drop in the cost of those units got permanently installed. It's still having flexibility with the cars that we have right now. So. Just adding to the inventory.
What do you see as like the, it's a seven, 10 year lifespan. But I'm thinking in terms of like seven, 10 years from now. We don't want to be replacing fifteen at a time, right? Like, so is there a grant? Do you have like a thought process for? How we're going to put that into our tech annual technology expenditures, you know?
I will, I will be approaching that cycle the way I do any other piece of hardware in the environment. Just doing that, that piecemeal plan ahead cycling as in three years ago, we got our first unit. So that'd be the first batch for us to replace. And just kind of keeping that continuing going. Making sure that money's in budget to make the refresh possible whenever that time comes. So again, I'd say I just treat it like any other piece of hardware in my environment. They all have a life cycle. I mean, they are replaced at some point. So. But again, in terms of the budget planning aspect of that. This rolls right into replacement of desktop computers for the classroom. Once the, once the environment is such that they depend on this board. Morning to afternoon, they start there, they end there. Then there's no need for a desktop computer. Because that desktop computer is inside of that screen. So that, that will mitigate the cost of desktop replacement moving forward as well. So I just pick up all one solution.
Hey. I fully support these things. My service, a little bit with Jay is. In a couple of years, then the first one we brought down, you need to replace. One, getting the part where it's able to replace. Center with the, with the plug-in sideboard. You get to a point where a teacher has one in their, you know, mountain of all, which again is cool to subscribe to, but it's dead on a wall.
I mean, that, that is a scenario that's. We have, I mean, it's again, I say seven to 10 years just to be a conservative professional about it. I mean, these kids can run in the time of fifteen years with the proper treatment and. Being that we have the PC built in, whatever licensing we have for that operating system will be continued to be renewed via our other subscription licensing. So. It'll still be a valid device for years beyond ten, my opinion. We currently have. Two Promethean boards, which we got from a grant the second year I was here. That's still functioning well in the library. Down in those veins and there's one in the classroom of school. So again, these lifespans. They vary again, and it depends on. A lot of the times what the company chooses to do when they come forward with a model. So you have a model that maybe not have the features that this new guy has. And at that point, you start to determine, is this now time to replace this? Because we want everyone to have these features. Then again, that's just kind of a. The way people do business unfortunately sometimes. So I don't think we'll hit that wall with their touch. Everything they have done so far has been extremely. Kind, I'll say to the, to the education. Market. They, they specialize in. Making sure we use these, you know, as long as we can. So I'm confident that. We won't be caught in a rut where we have to replace twenty million dollar ones. I don't see that as a possibility.
Because one of the, you know, obviously one of the issues would be if they just stop supporting. Particular model or particular operating system and, you know. I mean, that's not something that you're concerned about in terms of on the. On the, on the horizon.
Not, not within the near future in any way. Like I said, their software, their base software runs off of Windows. So as long as we continue our Windows licensing for the most current, then their software is going to run on what we have. And like I said, that's, that's the Microsoft license, we hold on their bag, but. We keep that up because that's our entire environment. So we got to keep that valid and updated. And then, you know, their touch does the same thing. With that, knowing that we're looking for the newest stuff and it will only run on certain things and. But I'm confident that our face, our foundation is able to support that as we move forward for a while.
And these are, these have like a built-in PC.
They have, yep.
And as far as like the quality and the technology and the processors and stuff, you're happy with where that's at in terms of like not worried that. That that's approaching the end of this.
Well, again, the hardware itself, as in the touch screen is. That's a pretty stable piece of hardware. If you can pound on it, whatever. So if the PC is a module that can be replaced standalone. So ultimately, if time comes for whatever reason that we would have to do that, it's, the screen's still the screen and we're just. You know, thirteen hundred dollars to replace just that PC unit. But again, everything they come with is robust, newest chipset. Plenty of RAM for the future to run heavyweight stuff. They planned it really well. And that's. Again, they, they really have a lot of forethought in what they're doing. And like I said, over time, I. Yeah, I can trust. For that. Any other clear touch? Okay. Any other hardware questions in general? For any line that was in the budget. Hardware. I think maybe you're, you're going to. Last year when. We approved the budget. Obviously, there was the, the routing switch and the firewall that were in there when we had to sort of hit it because our. Whole services and needed to be upgraded. Yep, virtual. We, yeah, we've done that, right? Yep. We still, but you're, we're, we're in a position where we still need to do those upgrades. It didn't happen last year, at least. Yeah, to the security device. Absolutely. Okay. And my strategy, like I said, is a subscription-based service. It rolls into a managed third-party security as a service model. That is in your packet. Like I said, we'll get, we'll get there. But yeah, that being said. We are definitely in need of that's, that's something that this year that's going to happen. So and that's my big project for the year. Again, in addition to many other security protocols and then new. And new support that I'll be using for visibility and like compliance management, best practice. But again, I got. Get that. Well, yeah. Services. So yeah, I'm with the city information system coming up one. Six years using that system. We do more with it every year as we move forward. They're tied into the New Hampshire state, all the state reporting is the Rama for every district now. So they're pretty much the predominant student information system. We're pretty happy with it as far as I can tell. Everything has its quirks, but it's all, you know. Part of your, you know, I think productive with it. I think it works well. Open DNS is our umbrella security filtering. That's all the content filtering for good devices, our entire network, malware prevention. Catching phishing emails. But it's mostly a content filtering solution. So prevents obviously all the content that you would imagine you don't want. But also all the underlying advertisements, all the stuff that can carry malware along with it. That's all blocked within that system. So it's, it's a great, it is the first line of defense and. In our system and it's been extremely reliable. It's been here before I got here. And yes, the price has definitely increased year to year because it is a really viable solution for what we. The reporting's excellent. So, you know, activity reports for students or whoever else, you know, would you pull that at any given time? It's, it's a great transparent system for us to, you know, have that first line of defense. I keep secure and manage, the managed. Security as a service. Endpoint detection and response and managed detection and response. And what that means is. The firewall that we will be using is managed. And the, the company Focus IP, Focus Technology, which is the last picture faculty. Who has hands on that in that watching our traffic. With AI, whatever else technology that they use to monitor. And basically immediate response to threats, immediate mitigation of those threats. Things that in my regular day, I would have no ideas happening quite honestly. The visibility. Of the systems that they employ are tremendous above my head. I'll just say that. Cybersecurity is becoming an extremely vast landscape of possibilities, good and bad. So with, with the managed response, the infection, there's a constant eye watching the activity on our network. Whether it's user-based, whether it's device-based or malware issue that's been persistent in our system that we haven't detected by other means that we have in-house. It's clearly visible on their end, all the traffics analyzed, executed. Second to second. And again, it just gives that visibility to everything that I, I don't have systems in-house to fit, quite honestly. If I wanted to do that, I'd, I'd have to sit at my desk and just watch traffic all day, you know? And that's, that's something I never had time for. There's a threat. If there's something that comes up, obviously that's my number one mission. That's what I'm doing. But in my regular day-to-day. I'm not poring over. You know, internet traffic logs. It's just not, you know, it's not high management plots for me. So that being said, this handles all that visibility. And response is the biggest part is that immediate response and mitigation. It adds for compliance. They guarantee compliance. Once they, they, they. They perform their initial security evaluation, which is scheduled for middle of this month, February, rather middle of February. That, that's a kind of a free. We haven't committed anything yet. That's just that free analysis of our current system and what that looks like for them and what, what our holes are. So have that vulnerability ass assessment done and they'll be able to craft a package for us. With brand-new-laid-in services that we need here. It's, it's not like I'll just sign up and here's your price and it's everything you got. They curtail and customize their responses to what our environment is. So they take a baseline and put a device, they'll take a baseline for a month. They say, here's what activity should look like. And then they use that as their basis. So if there's anomalous activity outside of that, and that's how they give a response and activity. Among using this classic fire scanners and all the tools that they have there and so. So talk about numbers in that regard. In my, in my, in my budget currently. There's a line under in three ninety for a three point five K, three, thirty-five hundred dollars. And that is the edge device support yearly cost that I provided for. That along with. Again, I haven't, I don't have a complete quote right now, but my speculation is that along with the. The remaining four thousand dollars from the initial. The edge security line, which has been reduced because we're not buying it outright. Gives us, you know, five hundred dollar a month roughly cost for the complete EDR services for the security as a service as a point. Your focus. And again, I haven't helped you to quote, that is just number I budgeted for research and other services and solutions. So that's a shift number-wise, but it would definitely come in under. What we've, what I've allocated a budget for, but it's raw standalone device. For that standalone device, we're going to get here's what's structured based and security services. And then it'll be available, obviously, as that goes. I'm trying to get a five-year contract in place. Because that's going to be five years. All those costs come way down. And that's, that's the plan with the security as a service manage. Any other, any questions on that?
Yeah. So presumably there. These folks are familiar with. Sort of our New Hampshire specific. Education privacy and security requirements.
The federal requirements and, and you know, the compliance with the. Perpa, COPPA and all the federal requirements, of course, they're level three compliant, which means they're the highest level security, you know, service company out there. They're out of Massachusetts. I don't. I don't foresee an issue or, oh, because there's, there's not a specific set of. Compliance for New Hampshire as. There is, well, we back up. I think we're talking about the large share.
Okay. I, I just think we have a, we have, we have a specific data security and privacy requirements when it comes to like. Vetting apps and programs that we can have, allow kids to, to. You know, the firewall obviously is processing every piece of data that's coming in and out of our system. These people are having access to that. Presumably in order to do what they're trying to do. Are they, are, are they up to speed with being able to manage that data? And keep that data in a way that's compliant with our New Hampshire specific security and privacy requirements.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. But again, they're top three compliant, which puts them again at the top tier of compliance nationwide. So, you know, federally, it's just a recognized as supplying these services. Again, we're not federal at this point. The state, the state mandates that you're talking about are more of an in-house. Solution. Everything, the vetting process runs through me and. I make the determination what comes in and out of the system per those, per those approvals or not. So that's kind of that, that responsibility is on my end and will remain there. But in terms of them holding our data, they don't actively hold our data. They don't hold identifiable data. They don't barely process. And again, it is. Like a client entity. In that regard.
And then. With this, we're not, we're not purchasing a piece of hardware. We're. We're just sort of paying the fee. They're providing hardware.
The firewall is part of the subscription service. It's basically what bases. All of their, again, functionality out of, so that's kind of part of the subscription service.
They provide, they come, they install the, the hardware for use as you're doing.
Oh, the configuration is definitely. I did working with them. Yeah. You know, to, ultimately, we have to. You know, ensure what I'm using currently in terms of configuration and access rules and all that stuff. They do all the migration to the new device. You know, and then we do the side-by-side test run, you know, to make sure everything is still protected in production mode. And then do the hot crossover, whatever, decide everything looks good.
And then the, the last question is. Related to the cost. So just, you're estimating approximately four thousand dollars this year. That presumably that's four thousand dollars every year. We're going to be paying for this service and like for the lease on the equipment and the service or whatever. The physical firewall. Is a little bit more expensive than that?
So if you were to purchase the hardware firewall, it'd be six, ten, six thousand dollars roughly. Yep.
And then. And then we'd have our annual licensing fees and, and maintenance fees and service contracts and whatever.
Yep.
What, what was, you know, after, after this year, if we purchased the firewall and wanted to. And what are those annual fees? I'm just trying to get a sense of like over the five-year life of, of this sort of device potentially. What are the costs? Because it's about twenty grand if we go with the service. If it's significantly less than that or more or similar with.
Well, it would be less because not only we're getting firewall, provided the service. Again, the security as a service is that umbrella that's going to be that protection level. That, that is ultimately what we're paying for, quite honestly. I mean, the firewall device is a firewall device, you know, they, they do what they're told to do. So all the services that were gaining the visibility, the response. That's, that's pretty much where your money's going.
Is there replacing services that we have in place or is that additional or additional?
It's, it's on top of for sure. Because like I said, there's. There's, there's a large spread landscape out there and it's only continued to grow. So the more visibility. That is, you know, available, the better off we are. Constantly updating definitions, new malware, zero-day exploits. All these things are extreme updated to the second and then get analyzed against our traffic. But in the end, yeah, year to year firewall support, we expect to spend, you know, we're currently, we're at twenty-eight hundred dollars a year for firewall support. For the, you mean, we have right now. And so I, that's why I put it at thirty-five. Except not exactly sure. What that looked like going forward. So I didn't determine the model or make the firewall we're going to use. But three months ago, when I was putting it together, I just kind of just decreased that number a little bit for stipulation and then not knowing exactly. What was going to happen with that. So we currently are at about twenty hundred dollars a year.
All right. So it's not. It, it, you know, best case scenario, worst case scenario is thirteen hundred dollars more approximately a year. And you're, it, it's your opinion that. For what we're getting extra. From secure manage over spare money. That's worth that extra money.
One hundred percent. Absolutely. Like I said, the, the level of granularity, I just keep saying visibility because that's what it comes down to. You know, if you can't see what's happening, you can't respond to what's happening. And so these systems are automated in such a manner that. They see the threat, they, they either they slice the connection to prevent any spreading, they, they, they operate and engage the antivirus endpoint protection that we also give within this package. So each one of our desktop computers, every one of our laptops will have. The antivirus endpoint. Solution which ties into that. So ultimately, that's antivirus license, you can run up to seven thousand dollars a year. So this gives us that advantage without. Don't want to stand alone antivirus switching. This gives us all that functionality in a managed package.
And maybe you haven't. Sort of done the, the, the thinking that it would take to answer this, but you know, if there's any services that we currently pay for that we could potentially eliminate if. You know, based on stuff that we're getting.
Um, this package. Well, 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 within our Microsoft licensing, we pay for the, the expanded Microsoft Defender package. So theoretically that would back to go away. Again, it's. I, I, again, I, this is just in addition to, I really can't see anything that I could. Slice out to make up for this. Again, it's super comprehensive service. That just, if nothing else, gives, gives confidence. Just knowing, you know, that it's there, it's protecting us always. And my job is. Here and there, you know, and retract things, not retract things, but ultimately there's not enough time in the gap. To, you know, to pay attention. Again, I'll say the current threat landscape, it's, it's, it's one of these situations that. It's not that we want to shoot a cage. We, we don't want to. Do it halfway. I don't, I don't think you get up much. I don't think we can afford as a district to do half of the work. So this, this puts the complete package in place for. Um, so this, this puts the complete package in place for, again, visibility and response in a timely manner. Yeah.
Just. It seems like more of the professional development and a lot of our meetings focus on cybersecurity. And they tell us these stories about school districts and other companies that have had. These threats are, they had actual events, right?
Were we affected by that? No, no, we don't use power, there's a power school.
Yes, power school.
Yeah.
Yeah, another student information system that's used in the state, they have.
Yeah, we use that power school, yeah, and that's, they got rid, we got rid of that about eight years ago, first one got online.
It's scary.
Yeah.
How often is our system threatened?
Second.
How often do you see a threat to our system?
Daily. Absolutely, um, again, these threats, the threats range from, hey, I got this email from Debbie and I know it's not Debbie. Yeah, so there's your, your tier one, all the way up to tier five, you know, they kind of categorize these things relatively based on. What could possibly happen, um, and again, that email could have set off. Another thing that, you know, two days later, you'll find out, oh, there's another incident, I got a malware response on one of my endpoints. That stemmed from a click. And all these things that I'm talking about are visible through the managed services.
And how many uh. I think you will have to do. How many devices are on top of the square?
Total, okay, solid, total, okay, I know roundabout numbers, obviously, and it's that two hundred seventy Chromebooks. Uh, no. Two ninety at this point, um. I'll be close to popping a device, I'd say between server instances and all this like operating, you know, whether virtual or physical. Yeah, close to popping a device is all told.
So. Four thousand dollars divided by five hundred devices. That we pay to make sure that, you know.
It's, it seems reasonable, um, I know, I know, uh, to me, it seems extremely reasonable, uh, just and again, later. Uh, again, I do have, I do have an entire, as you can see in your packet, some infographics on cybersecurity, state of cybersecurity and. And kind of what it would cost to mitigate a ransomware attack, how long would it take to be back up and running again? Um, in New Found, Hillsdale, Hinsdale, um, Bedford, Concord, Cheer Charge. I mean, these, these are, these are schools that all have been in the past two years. So K twelve, like I said, we, there's a big old bullseye on K twelve. And again, in your infographic, you'll see some of the reasons why. Um, again, public entities are always a big target because they, they just want to get it out of the way. They just want to get back to business and a lot of the times, the, the resources are there to have to move forward with whatever it needs to be done. Uh, whether it's bringing in an external, you know, uh, the threat analysis or bringing in uh, friends and investigators. Um, we're really fortunate with Primax that they provide such robust wing assistance for us, God forbid something would happen. Uh, million dollar, you know, million dollar, what we have, million dollar, uh. How great are you guys, which in the end might not be, unfortunately, but, um. Well, that's, yeah, I mean, the stories are endless, yeah, and they have call centers for these people, I mean, you call them, hey, how you doing? I just got hit, okay, well, let's talk about how you can get back, blah, 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 it's like you're calling for support to a cell phone call. Uh, that's how organized these, 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 these criminals are.
Um, and didn't, um, don't, don't we have some? Some protection and some functionality in, in these new virtual servers, I thought that was part of the package with like backup.
The redundancy in the backup.
Yeah, so protection for, for ransomware type attack that we would be able to restore our system without.
Well, there's, there's a theoretical limit to all of the things you're saying, right?
Yeah, sure.
Um, but in the end, yeah, we, we're doing what we can in terms of uh, the backup solutions that we use, the, like I said, the virtual computing. Environment is twice redundant, meaning. God forbid, uh, the managed uh, security services sends something wrong with one of our core servers. Just that, switch that unit off, get right to the next, which is in production, but not mirrored exactly, so it prevents the threat to the new unit. We continue on in production, this is, this threat's mitigated over here by itself, and we still continue production, that's the. That's the intent of the systems we have in place. Now, ransomware, malware, all these things are changed on a daily basis. Uh, how they circumvent whatever protections are in place, again, happens daily, they understand. What our backup strategies are in that they know, I back up, say, this is interesting numbers. I'll back up every day and then I'll back up every week and then every two weeks I'll back up. So they know this is a general, uh, you know, cycle of how people back their stuff up. Well, they'll get into system, they'll sit there for that two months, wait for you to create eight backups, and then they'll hit you. And then you don't have any backups because your redundancy is gone, so again, the. The way that. What they understand about how people operate is what is the biggest threat. Uh, and now it's not just that they hit you with it and give us money or else, now it's about your data. So they'll take your data, they'll hold your data, and they'll say, if you don't want us to release this data. You have to pay us, or if you don't want us to destroy this data, it's not just about getting your data back, it's just more of an extortion. It's an all around extortion point at this point, um, so again, some of the stories are horrendous. Um.
And so one more thing, I guess, is uh. I did, you know, the quick math, twenty-eight hundred. Over the, a year roughly, right, for, for five years plus the six thousand adds up to. Twenty thousand dollars, five years of that service is to my cousin. Um, so, uh, uh, on a five year lifespan, it's. Approximately equal, because we're not purchasing that.
Correct, and again, purchasing device would require us to purchase another device back to seven years. This is, this is replaced.
But I guess, so that was my question, yeah, using that as, using a five year lifespan. It's, it's essentially the same price, um, is that, if you're saying that a five year lifespan is probably. What we, what, what we're looking at, or is that?
If we were to, if we were to standalone purchase firewall and utilize it, yeah, yeah, five to seven, again, just because again. As the threats change, the device needs to be beefier or to have, you know, more protocol accessibility, so. You know, as they change their, their configuration, the capabilities of that device. The charges go up, essentially, you know, as they've been forged, there's always going to be a rise in that cost. Um, and they, they, and firewall devices can become out there. Like very good, I mean, they're still operable for sure, I mean, don't, don't pass traffic and all that good stuff, but they don't have the, the. The detection capabilities or the prevention capability that, say, a next gen, which is the newest term, uh, next gen firewall has. Um, and again, we do not currently have a next gen firewall, so this for us is among the upgrade, with just that edge security to start with.
And then the switch, that's just something that, that's separate, needs to be done.
That's, that's just a necessary part of routing traffic, I'll say, yeah, so the internet connects to that routing switch. Well, firewall routing switch and then a routing switch sends everything else to the other stacks of the building and then to the access points where else. And what we have now is just, again, rich and end of life, um, the warranty's out on it and I can't purchase any more support. So at this point, it's definitely. Time to upgrade. I appreciate working through that with me, because again, the subscription services can be daunting at times for me to understand and be, have that confidence in their systems. Um, the way, this is the solution that's becoming more prominent in most environments. Is to have that managed service over top of everything, just figure in your job without consistently constantly worrying about all this other stuff. Which is always going to be a worry, it's not going anywhere, so. Well, uh, Bear Monday is uh, basically in your, in your budget, it's, it's listed as managed engine. Uh, but uh, decided to go with another platform, uh, which is called Bear Monday, they are a much more. Uh, seasoned uh, platform, they've been around out of Boston for thirty plus years. Uh, they basically active directory management is what that is. Active Directory is the Microsoft platform that we use for all, all the internal services that I described in the virtual platform back in the day then. Um, and it provides visibility for patch management and updates in real time, uh, also remote support. So, you know, Bart and I will have the capability to reach into a desktop from wherever, to reach into a laptop when the teacher's at home. This gives us that capability for remote support, for updating remotely, uh, push out policies remotely. Um, which is a, a very, a huge thing, uh, account auditing and security auditing in real time. So as basically as, okay, so we install Adobe Reader on all our laptop, all of our desktop, part of our image. So as that becomes outdated or as a vulnerability gets exposed for that piece of software. The very Monday platform recognizes that, creates a job for that. It allows you to, to, to support that and push that upgrade out remotely from any time anywhere. So again, it's another piece of visibility, um, it's another uh, tool in the toolbox, I'll say. It, for me, it replaces. Five, three tools. So, um, the managed engine that we've been using doesn't provide any remote support capabilities, um, and it's. Roughly the same price, so that in itself for me is a huge step up, to have that capability for our staff. To be able to reach it in real time, fix, password reset, uh, any of that good stuff, um. But the security profiling vulnerability, vulnerability management is probably the biggest, the most attractive feature for, for me. I think it having, um, you know, say, two hundred and fifty Windows devices in house, again, that's just a lot. If I were to sit down and do all my updates for every machine, that's, that's twelve hours of my day. You know, so that's, it's just, it just cuts down a lot of the overhead for, for our department, quite honestly. And it gives us a single pane of glass of visibility to say, oh, Heather Crow's, Heather Crow's machine needs this update right now. You know, for whatever reason, and then on top of the security scanning, it's a full through package, but I shouldn't use that term ever. It's, it's a package that can be relied upon. Um, but again, central management is key, uh, and again, visibility to understand what's going on up there is the biggest, biggest advantage for us. Any questions on that management?
That's only Windows based.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, Chrome, again, Chrome does a really good job of that management console that we pay the license for. Uh, to do real time reports on policy updates, push out policies to Chromebooks, that natively already has all that functionality built in. Um, uh, security trade on services, that's, again, uh, same house training, uh, phishing tests, uh. Uh, we're going to try to do more this year, bring in, uh, bring in a speaker hopefully from, from Primax, the Adam group. Would ask them to come in house to do, do some real world security training, um, for our staff, uh. I don't even think that costs anything, I think that's great. Uh, but that being said, the auditing services is the other part, uh, and like I said earlier, we are getting that free security and penetration tasks from Focus Technologies. So that actually, that number will probably, I will hit that number this year, being that all my vulnerability testing for the year will be done. And then once we have that, it's a, it's a constant vulnerability test. Once they're in house and they're, you know, uh, traffic is, is the first step is finding your holes, like I said, they'll do that scan. They'll look at our stuff, they'll say, here's what you need to mitigate before we get in there. And then once we mitigate this, you know, these holes, whatever they be, if there are any, then they're, they confidently roll their package and configure to our. To our, you know, internal network. What's out, we call data protection, we've been using, uh, that is, again, provides immutable backups. Which being no one can touch them, it's uh, it's ransomware, obviously, is, the big thing is they take your data, they encrypt it. And if you can't use it, no one can use it till they tell you how to get out, um, the immune backups are absolutely one hundred percent immune to that. Um, this is, uh, this is a practice that they've been using for three or five years now, somewhere immune backups are becoming the norm. If you don't have immutable backups, then you're absolutely at risk for it becoming corrupted. So that's, we're on that, we're currently on that level, plant a senior, and again, rolling into new backup software with a virtual system. Provides that extra layer of recovery as well. Uh, that's, I mean, you can store all the data you want, but if you can't recover it in a timely manner, it's, you know, what are you doing, so. Okay, the other, the Rubus Central. This is our management licensing for the wifi system and all of the switches that we have. Currently for distribution in our stack, not the core switch, but every other one. Um, that provides next day replacement for all devices, that provides twenty-four, twenty-four seven support for all the hardware. Um, this number only represents one year for the devices in this building. Cause if you remember, we did this building, then we did that building, whenever we did the wifi system three, four years ago. We did it in a piece of this and that, so this is one year behind that in terms of licensing, we did a five year, we did a five year license, the initial round. So this one year gets us to align all those services. Uh, into just the one recurring, hopefully five year cycle. And again, it covers all the access points, every piece of our wifi system that our switch controlling. Uh, again, I know when you see that number and you're like, that's only one year, what's going to happen next year? I have that, there's other things that will not fill the void, who will, who would not be, would not be increasing our bottom line budget with this relicensing. Because yet, everything just works in that cycle, if I'm not doing this next year. Something else, you know, something else would be there to take that mark, if, if there's kind of how I, I roll things over. Um, Microsoft licensing and Google enterprise licensing, uh, which is necessary for everything we do here. And the Google enterprise licensing is separate from the management device licensing, just to be clear. Um, Google enterprise gives us expanded functionality within docs, slides, um, and more, uh, uh. More granular control over our role identity and uh, and user rights ultimately. So, uh, certain features in enterprise aren't available to just in free offering, uh, we upgraded the enterprise during COVID. Because it provided a lot of, you know, all those extra bells and whistles we need from remote, uh, but we've definitely found that it's necessary for us to continue. The functionality that everyone's been used to, um, like I said, the little key features that people use and don't realize. We, you know, without that licensing, they'd be taken away. And when I say that, I'm like, you know, blur your background and, you know, I just like weird little things that people are grown accustomed to using that. You know, what, what is kind of pulling out from under. Uh, again, so it's that forty-seven, fifty is Microsoft though, the Microsoft's about twenty, twenty-eight year, um. So. And then people pause it right on the two thousand.
You said the device management licensing, that doesn't include that, but that's, that was baked into the two hundred fifty dollar price that. So that's a one time, need, or yearly?
Oh, no, the management license?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one time, for the life of the device. Any questions on any other of these things? Alright. Yeah, so ultimately, uh, yeah, this is, this is something to explain again. The uh. The new cycle for Chromebooks and how we're doing that. Again, a bigger screen, that's great, all that good stuff. So the infographic stuff I have is just to get real quick, just to see through the numbers, this is last year, um. Eighty-five percent of institutions of education were attacked, that's a broad term. Okay, so again, like you said, is there an incident? Absolutely, there's incidents every day, how you, an attack is really, I would never, we've never been attacked. Uh, but again, incidents happen every day, sure, um, that's a strong one. But, you know, ninety-two percent of the, the malware driven uh, attacks are financially driven, so they're just looking for money. Uh, if it's your data that gets you the money, they'll take your data, if it's just shutting you down until you can't operate to get their money, they'll shut you down. Um, a lot of these, a lot of these uh, threat actors are target specific. They know what they're doing, they know the industry they're going after, like I said before, they know what the resources are within that industry. Um, education is the number two industry that actually pays the rancids out through the threat actors. So, again, because they know that, that just makes our bullseye even bigger, right? They know that if you get that money, they're going to hit us first. Uh, recovery time is the, the X factor here. Um, again, based on your systems, based on your strategies for backup, based on uh, what your end users habits are. Um, you know, recovery time in education is the longest of any industry, um. Again, I don't have to be more metrics in a day or night, but uh, I do know from experience and from. Uh, horror stories from colleagues that. It's extremely difficult to operate without core systems in an education platform, in an education center. They said stats reeling, um, as it would anywhere, but in education even worse so. Um, and again, the long recovery time also contributed to lack of resources, so again, if we don't have. That, that backup strategy in place, you don't have the funds for that, then that takes up my recovery time even longer to rebuild your system. Uh, there was eighty-one percent is uh, critical base, which means they're trying to get your password, whatever that is. Once they get you a password, then they're in your system, depending on what your position is. That's how they strategize what they're going to do, so for instance, say spear phishing or whale phishing. That's how they strategize what they're going to do. So for instance, say spear phishing or whale phishing would be targeted at tax disabled right here. They would only send phishing emails to these folks because they know these are the people that have power to make decisions. And that's, that's the strategy they employ. They get on our website, they say, oh, who's the school board? Hey, whale phishing, you guys have the power to make decisions. One of you is in a position to approve a financial transaction. They're gonna know that, or they're gonna attempt to get in the middle of that and try to, it's a little true to do something. You know, impersonating her, impersonating someone else to where they know you make decisions, so. Um, credential base, so they want tactical lowest tagged proof. They just walk their way right up. Um, so that's, that's kind of the scary part is how do they know all this stuff? How do they know who to hit? Um, again, social engineering is the term that's used. Um, they can give you the, give you the impression that something's at risk, that you're going to lose something, your family's in danger. Uh, and they, they, they make you act in a hasty way, you know, make a bad decision. That's kind of the whole MO. Uh, recovery cost is a real thing. Um, obviously. You can't really speculate what that might be before it happens. You really don't know what you. In the end, this is gonna sound weird, but you don't really know what you have until it's gone. Beyond that, right? So we know we have a financial system that's in the cloud. We know we have on premise. Uh, on premise student files, uh, that could be digital, some are, some aren't. We also have cloud based files that are your student information, uh, personal emails from one of our, one of our administrators. Um, the time to retrieve all that lost work, all that lost time is extremely expensive. So again, this, this next one is kind of, you know, you'd expect it. Um, the people that do pay. They, it's not guaranteed getting anything back. Uh, so again, once you get to that whole process and they'll negotiate with you and. They'll pick what they can, that whole thing, so. Um, and again, uh, reputation is the other thing that is lost. Uh, you know, at a topical stage here. It's, it's, you know, companies obviously suffer more from the reputation knock than a school will. But at the same time, no one wants to know that, I, I know I don't, want to be noticed that school that got hit. It's for any reason. So how do we, once I have a security instance, using the National Institute of Standards and Technology Framework. Uh, we use a threat continuum through risk management. So in a nutshell, um, construction response models. Third party support for compliance and best practices. Incident response plans, which we are currently this close to bringing to you for approval. Uh, we have to do a tabletop exercise, but we're doing a response plan. Uh, once we through that, we'll be very good to present that to you guys very soon, uh, which is extremely important piece of. Our institution. Um, it identifies risk, it identifies solutions, uh, and in remediation. And God forbid, there's a, there's a plan in place, people have responsibilities to continue business as we, as best we can. Um, and then again, the review of uh, future projections, uh, protections rather and responses. Is extremely important to understand and to continue on that. Data governance, cybersecurity governance is the key. This is what makes it all work. Um, without solid cybersecurity governance, we're just operating in the ether. We don't know what we're gonna do next. Um, with accountability frameworks, which play into again, the third party services and all the other platforms we have. Um, the higher decision making, which is incident response plan and the remediation of a threat. Uh, all the way down to your, say, the processes, the procedures, which is falls into our policy set. Uh, which is acceptable use policy for teachers and students. Again, oversight and planning. That's, it's gotta happen through this thing, so gotta be ready for whatever and you gotta. You gotta see it to be ready. Any questions on anything?
That big, this is what I need.
I appreciate that. But yeah, so, so yeah, so in the end, this is, this is a great handout to focus, this really does go. Deep into what they provide, how they provided, their history, um, again, extremely reputable. Um, uh, it's actually, yeah, they were suggested to me with that three calls so far with them. Um, they work in the industry sector, sorry, in the education industry, uh, their contracts, it's replying. Replying schools, their contracts, uh. It's the other key. In Boston. There, a reputable company that again, I have full confidence in as a. For security as a service. Thank you for what you do. Yeah, I appreciate it. And yeah, I appreciate your understanding and all your, all your ears for sure. And um. Yeah, we will keep them safe.
Thank you so much. Nothing on that uh, letter, newsletter.
Dancing, yes. I didn't receive.
Um, a couple things that will probably be later in the meeting, but there is one thing we need to set up a trust fund hearing at the beginning of the next regular board meeting. For a piece of equipment that Jay might be able to explain better than I can, but it's a piece of uh, equipment used with the K connection. Um, program. And last year, it was in our budget initially, but we pulled it out. And said, when the time comes, we'll look at it and give the trust fund to make that purchase and the time has come.
How much is the purchase?
It's five, it's about six thousand dollars.
And what's in the trust fund?
And the equipment trust fund is twenty-five thousand and in the technology trust fund is nineteen thousand. Oh. I brought that, I brought that because we updated a lot of this equipment back in two thousand eighteen. In the, in the connection.
You want me to just explain the device?
Yeah, so in the equipment trust fund is twenty-three thousand and in technology is forty, forty-three thousand.
Forty-three?
Yeah, in technology.
Do we have anything else to add to that?
We've identified a number of items. As we've been going through the current year's budget and we knew if, um, depending on how we fund that moving forward. It was gonna be like a negative balance, so we took everything out of the technology.
I got you. So you're recommending that six come out of the equipment?
I mean, it can come out of either. Piece of equipment, but it's more of a.
Yeah, I mean, in my, it's um. Is definitely technology. Uh, it's gonna replace the uh, new tech Tricaster unit is what it's, what we currently have. And what that is, is the video production hub for all of. The uh, the can connection productions. So the Tricaster, all the cameras connected to the Tricaster, it has all, it's, it controls all the effects. The fades, the, the, the production as a live production, basically runs a live production. Uh, the current unit has been having some issues, um, audio. In addition to that, it's out of licensing, meaning that it's running on a Windows seven base right now.
Oh, wow.
Which, yes, um, it's a proprietary Windows seven. I don't know if you know new tech or tricasting, like as a whole with that. It's a, it's extremely, right now, it's like the, 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 the norm in the podcast production or whatever, you know, like it's. It's a prosumer level device, um, so it's not up here, it's right in the middle. Um, like I said, what we have currently is the operating system is outdated and it can't be upgraded because it's a proprietary. System. So in order for us to upgrade the OS, we'd have to buy a whole new unit. With the new OS, with the new licensing and a, a Tricaster, a new Tricaster, uh, that can match up with the one we have, runs about eighty-five thousand dollars. So this solution, um, basically, it's, uh, it's a, it's a pre configured PC. That meets all the specifications to run video production software called V next. Which is again, one of the standard for prosumer uh, video production. It, um, the cool thing about this approach is that we'll be able to utilize. That licensing for the, for the software, even if we have to replace the hardware runs on. So it's not a proprietary solution, the way the new tech is where you meet your guidance or you don't, and you can't run. Tricaster software on just any computer, you have to find it, then we get to license it, whereas this allows us to. If we need in five, seven years, upgrade the horsepower on that. Computer or replace that computer for whatever reason, it cuts the cost down dramatically. Than if we have to replace the Tricaster as a whole again. So it's, it's a more economical approach, quite honestly.
Is that, is that manual license for the software?
No, that's a one, that's a one time charge for that software and I, that. Dan, Dan Adams has probably more information on that side of it. As I understand it, it's a one time license fee. I can't tell you what the upgrades. Would cost going forward for feature packs and things like that. I don't have any details. Uh, but I do know it's perpetual license for that device or for that device for that software package. Again, that could change over time. If they add features and we need to operate something, um, but again, I don't have that information. That's a Dan Adams. Information. V next. Oh, Vivios are, you know, Vivios are, that's our cloud based video hosting service. So we're on Vivio now, which provides a lot of, a lot of extra functionality over to you, which you've been using, yes. It's night and day, um, live events. Everything and again, we're just kind of, again, rather, throwing into the Vivio platform and. It definitely provides a lot more flexibility for us and future expansion, for again, live soccer games. Real time, you know, set up streaming events, things like that.
Thanks.
I mean, last time when we did the replacement, a lot of that is what we use the technology.
So we have other things coming out of the technology fund. How? Much in the hole is it put us if we take all of this out of that as well?
I, I think we can plan for the other things, but. Might have been in our minutes in the budget. I mean, I think we, if we took everything out. Yeah, in terms of how we fund and that we haven't talked about the warrant articles and how we're gonna fund our trust funds.
Right, that's, that was gonna be my next suggestion.
So we probably, it's five thousand in the hole.
It leaves us five thousand in the hole, so we technically could put an additional five thousand into that line item.
Or more, right, where we take yourself.
So if my notes are correct. We were talking about. Taking the clear touch stuff out of technology.
Yeah, you got your minutes.
The ten new high school standard computers.
Yeah.
And the firewall switches that we were.
Which.
Which, so that's twelve thousand, that, well, six thousand we'll have to stay because we're gonna need to get that. But six thousand, we're not gonna need to, that was sort of happened. Well, I guess, figure out a way to. Budget for that four thousand.
Well, that's in, yeah.
I don't know if it's in there though, because when, I think when the, when the budget was made, that was planned. That's not new. So, so the four thousand a year is probably not in the budget.
Yeah.
Thirty-five hundred dollars for the current, that's in there for the uh, edge device support. Is that thirty, that's thirty-five hundred? Okay, so we're five hundred dollars off.
Yeah, so the, the six thousand that we originally, so that can almost replace what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, because that was the, and then the baseball pitching machine was something that was like. So you said with the six thousand, they would put this in the hole or would have, even without it?
Without that originally. Which I, I didn't have this. I'm gonna talk about the budget, I have to, how much we were.
So we could set the hearing to take money from the technology budget and if it puts it in the hole, we could. That's what I meant, just on, um, if, and if it puts us in the hole, I mean, because it's not like. We're overdrawing that account because it is an account.
Yeah.
It's a hole, um, but we can make up that deficit.
When we look it out of one.
Exactly, exactly.
So we wanna notice up. Technology. That would be not next week.
It will be at the next regular board meeting.
Yeah. Well, next week's just a budget. Which I won't be at because that's.
Is that the only thing you had?
That's all I have now. Me, the third brand, um, that we wrote for back in December, we did receive that. Um, and so that was for twenty-five hundred dollars to purchase a three D printer for the elementary.
Right, right.
And the necessary supplies, so I'm working with Lindsay. Um, on what would be the best printer for an elementary school, something of decent quality, but it's not a lot of maintenance. Um, uh, so they're, they're gonna help us with that. Uh, so it's exciting, they're pretty, my daughter's very happy about that. Uh, these were just the two rest meetings, just so you have them here, um, so you were aware. And that we had a really great meeting, I can trade from the test to that with Lindsay, really mapping out what. Um, K to twelve, so it looked like in the district. So it was yesterday, we'll be meeting with them every two weeks. Um, in subgroups, um, that will work on mission and vision and then, um, one that, uh, really works on, on some of the. Experiments and things that we're gonna be doing around that, so what we're calling it play, how we're gonna play with the kids. Um, and, um. And then you saw the communication and then the rest are just updated meetings for you guys on.
So we do have a budget session next Wednesday.
Yes.
Well, that's that tonight, we had tentative, but yeah, just. We, we have to look at everything because of. The timeline is coming, the time is coming that you need to vote on budget to have it set for the budget hearing. On February twelfth, so we usually try to wrap everything up by the end of January, but you can only vote at a regular meeting.
So we should finalize, finalize next week to vote.
Right, yeah.
But it, that shouldn't necessarily be a particularly long meeting.
It shouldn't.
Just sort of incorporating all the changes.
Yeah.
And reviewing.
Yeah, hi. Happy New Year. Uh, yeah, just, I wanted to go over some of the things we did right before break, who haven't met. Um, our grades five through twelve attended, uh, Christmas Carol. Uh, we call that a walking field trip across the street from Jean's Playhouse. Uh, so we ended the year pretty, pretty on a, on a very nice note. Um, we had, uh, LWEA's annual ornament workshop. Uh, where staff and. Little high school kids come up to the elementary building and then assist with, you know, a, a holiday craft. That's takes place up here in, in uh, different classrooms. Uh, and then our annual, it's right, just for kids shopping, huh? All those plungers that got purchased and put around.
Favorite event.
Yes, right. All the wrappers that we had, it, it was a good time with, with all the help and volunteers, so. It's always a fun time. I know the kids get excited that day.
I think they don't like it more than the kids do, honestly. At least as much as.
They love the shopping bags with their little goodies and walking around at school. Uh, and then we had, um, that week right before our hour break, we had our holiday staff party. Uh, which was very nice. We received some nice appreciation for that. Um, and then off note, we, um, yeah, on Tuesday, we had poetry out loud. And in the middle high school, which, you know, Heather Crell and Jen Witter sort of run and, um, I will just. If you don't mind, I'll announce some of our winners that we had and then kind of move forward when the next event is. So, um, ninth grade, we had Kai, Manchara Romney, uh, Briar Clark and Tegan Boucher. And our tenth grader was Maha Awan. And eleventh grader, we had Edna Dutilli and our seniors were Blake Monsom, Sarah Jolly and Dalton Lillen. Um, and then they all got up and, and read their poem. And I believe Dr. Steady was one of our judges and same with Ashley Young Heine. Um. We had Diana and Bart, right? Bart, am I missing, was there, who else?
I think Jackie.
And, and Jackie. Okay, right. Yes, it was, it was a good time. Um, and next Tuesday, next Tuesday the fourteenth?
Yes.
Yes. So next Tuesday at the Woodstock Inn at four thirty in the afternoon. Uh, those, uh, individuals that I mentioned will, um, present again their, their poems. Uh, in front of different judges and. In case you're really wondering, we're gonna ramp it up with fourteen elementary students and fifteen middle school students. They are gonna be the opening acts for that grand finale. So, yes. So, yes.
There's been a lot of excitement around.
Yes, it has. It has.
I don't know, it's kind of blending together. This week was a third trip.
Yes, it was on Tuesday.
Um, they, the middle school students that volunteer to read their, that's a site there.
Yes.
And they, they just got out. It was so great.
Oh, great.
Shy.
It was like for the moment. Yes, yes, thank you. Yes.
That was great.
Yeah, it was.
Very cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or anything for? Okay, yeah.
I wanna say thank you. To the kids that made the ornament for us. That was the first ornament that I put on my tree. And it looked good to me at a really bad time and put a big old smile on my face. I just wanna say thank you to the kids to make it.
We got some luck in that.
Yeah, they had a great time doing that.
That's awesome.
All right, committee reports. Initial person, we had a policy committee meeting tonight.
There was one this evening. Yes. So it took hours. We do have some policies that will bring forward at the next meeting.
And I think we have, we have nothing on agenda for policies for this meeting. Nominations, recommendations, presentations. For transportation. So we have school transportation.
Yeah, we put our transportation, our transportation contract is. Technically expiring at the end of this year. We do a five, we should do a five year contract. So we received two bids, one from Durham School Services. And one from Notchu Transport. So they're, again, both submitted for five years. So we break down our bid. With our daily home to school student home group. Daily routes to the CTE centers in Littleton and White Mountain. Regional and the charter school. And then the after school program. We have buses driver picks home. And then athletics and field trips. Athletics and field trips have paid for the trip as needed. So. We are recommending to. To go with Durham School Services mainly because of the cost. Overall, the increase in year one for. Daily school, the home route, CTE Charter School and after school programs is about $20,000 increase over the current year. For 11%. The bid that we got from Notchu for those re-roots would be an increase of 81,000. Or 45%. I mean, the biggest thing is. Notchu is, is a newer company, so they're carrying costs right now a lot.
Right, yeah.
Mainly their equipment.
Where they are.
They're out of frank money. We are currently using them for our, our athletics. So we, we talked to Durham because that is our. A, a big piece. Durham doesn't have the drivers.
Right.
Notchu has been great to step in and help us out this year, but their costs. They're expensive. And we, we talked to, again, Durham and asked them about the athletic trips. They still can't. Probably won't be able to provide those with us. So, for us for next year. If their drivers situation stays the same. So we're most likely gonna. Work with Notchu, you know, working with two companies. To provide that service is, is really hard. You know, I, I talked to Matt the other day. He would prefer to just go to one company, you know.
It's not that expected to do.
We worked on some other things like using the vans from the town.
Yep.
That's, that's great. You know, that can save us some money and use them. Where we can use them.
Right.
But anyway, if, if, if Notchu can't do that, Durham, we try to do that. Durham can't, you know, field trips will probably stay with Durham. Yeah, they charge us for those trips. Individually, but their costs again are a lot. Like we can cover them during the day trips.
Right.
Just that, it's the timing of those athletic things. So again, we're recommending, we continue to use. We're recommending that we. The board accepts the Durham School Services bid effective 2025, 26 school year through the 2029, 30 school year. Which would include the daily home to school, CTE and charter school and after school rooms. If Durham can provide the field trip coverage, the school should use Durham School Services and for athletics, we're recommending to work. Continue to work with Notchu. Just mainly due to their ability to cover those rules. And if things change, we can go to even company. Because again, that's.
Have we abandoned using the red bands?
No.
We, we're. Are we working towards that or are we trying to implement that?
I mean, it depends on the size.
Right.
They're 15 athletic players.
Right.
We can't play two soccer teams.
Oh, right.
I think it depends on, it depends on the size of the teams. Cross country, we can use, I mean, use them for some of the basketball. Games.
Okay.
Those bands, right?
Yeah, when we can, when we can, we do instead. Yes. And like, we're gonna use them for the winter program.
Oh, good.
Yeah, because.
For like a later bus.
Yeah, because they can do, give us the two buses in the morning. But on the way home because of the roots.
Oh.
They have to take one bus, bring kids over and then unload and go back and get the other kids. Now, we're gonna be able with the numbers is that one bus. Plus the van, get everyone back at the same time.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I think maybe when you were. You were. You missed the meeting, but there was, Primax came in and did a, and did a. Briefing or training for, for a bunch of. That's maybe.
Right.
Yeah, say everyone who drives those vans has to be trained.
Yeah.
We have to do it in town.
Yeah. They didn't come in.
I mean, it's something to really watch the next few years to see how that all pairs out, but I think it's, it's a good way to manage, manage some of our transportation needs to be. To access those vans that aren't being used.
Right.
The map keys, you know. FBI who use that for their companies.
Yeah.
So it's like one of that, whatever we fit and use, that's what, that'll be our first.
That is. I think it's a great tool for the, the school and the towns to work together and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I love that.
So you want action on that now?
Yeah, we'd like to actually.
Can I just, you said the first year, it's gonna be 20,000 or more. Is there a built in like?
Yes, there is an increase every year. I mean, I have a spreadsheet, but I mean, they're both increasing.
Is it a percentage every year or not set?
Only on the field trips and athletics, it's a percentage, but the other one, they're set dollars.
Budget.
Yeah, so like. The first year for Durham. Or say that the daily. Yeah, daily routes, 128,000. The next year it jumps up to 134,000 and it jumps up to 139,000. And then to 145,000. I can pass this around. I can actually pass around the bins if you want to.
I don't need to.
But. Yeah, and it's a lot more affordable.
Yeah, right.
And. That's about five or $6,000 a year increase. What were, what were the increases baked into our last contract? Around same or? I just wondered why it's such a big. You know, from the end of our last contract to the beginning of this one, 20 grand when it's.
Because it's gone.
Yeah.
Drivers, costs have gone.
So, so the, our previous contract wasn't covering there.
Yes, with everything else. I mean, I was expecting, I was expecting more like what we got from the other companies, seriously.
Yeah.
It was really made me nervous.
I like the bus color.
Yeah.
That is blue.
Well, again, I mean, I think over. Just watching the next five years, they should be probably building the bigger.
Exactly, yeah.
Their equipment.
It'll be bringing a little more competition, I think.
Yeah, there was another company, JPI, you can see their buses around. They, they wouldn't be fit cuz they were private.
Right. Right. That's what I was afraid that Durham wasn't gonna be cuz they have the drivers. That was. I was afraid that that was gonna happen.
Yeah.
Then I guess I'll motion to improve the contract for Durham School Services for daily routes and our.
So most.
Thank you, Joe. Be further discussion. Almost favor six of five saying I. Those. Stintings and the motion carries. And just out of curiosity. Is there any in the budget? That we're working on? Has, has there been any increase baked into that?
I. I, oh. Yeah, I need to go back and look at the budget numbers now cuz I did put in an increase. It might be a little bit bigger than this.
Okay.
So I'll go back and look at those numbers cuz it's different line items.
Right.
Daily routes, they're, they're all broken out in different lines.
But you, you had. Anticipated.
An increase.
An increase. It may actually, we actually may be dealing with less.
Yes, but I'll. On that.
Well, that's good things.
Yeah.
We'll run that the next week.
Thank you, Deb.
Then see anything on our new business and continuing business budget items?
No, I get my biggest. Concern was the budget, the timelines that we have. We're gonna have that work session next week and then. January 22nd meeting, regular board meeting, you'll vote on everything between the budget parents.
Perfect, thank you. Don't see any students. We have.
Ray, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Thank you.
See any community? So. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. All the favors.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Long day to you guys. Appreciate you.